All right, Board of Directors for Clean Water Services, it's you Director Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Moss, this is Chair Catherine Harrington, we are back in open session with the Clean Water Services Plan to Rebuild Trust. And we have the, a full complement of five Board of Directors. And before I turn it over to them, the work session packet has been updated for this topic with three different documents. A PowerPoint slide set, an Exhibit A with Clean Water Services Plan to Rebuild Trust. And a copy of the Resolution and Order from April, Resolution and Order 25-5. So we'll turn it over to you, Acting CEO, General Manager.
Thank you.
Chair and Board, we're here today to talk about Plan to Rebuild Trust. I will be leading the presentation, Elizabeth will also be joining in some of the early slides, but we're going to bring Joe Gahl and Karen De Baker up to talk about the communications plan and we have other folks Kathy's here in case questions come up on finance and Elizabeth Meadows and our legal folks here as well. So we can go to the next slide, do I have a? Got me. The agenda will include discussing the leadership transition that is ongoing. We want to go through in detail the update on the actions in Resolution and Order 25-5. That will be through the handout, not in the PowerPoint presentation. And then with respect to rebuilding trust, spending some time to talk about our communication and engagement strategy. What we've, what we've gotten done, what we're planning to do as well. And other key actions, we'll summarize at the end of the presentation and then really look forward to having a lot of time for board questions and discussion. So with respect to the leadership transition, first of all, I want to thank you again for putting me in this leadership role. This is a really important topic, the rebuilding trust piece, both for our external parties as well as the staff that I've been lucky enough to work with these past 11 years. The transition itself, I think, is a very first important step that the board took. And we are striving to be as transparent as possible and to make this transition as seamless as possible. And I think we're doing a pretty good job on that so far, at least internally with respect to the takeover of the duties of the CEO. So some of the early actions that have happened, and I did talk about some of these in our leadership updates this morning, so apologize for any overlap. But getting out and talking to folks with the help of Joe has been, has been a key component of that and there's a lot more of that to come. And I'm looking forward to, to doing that. Joe's got a good playbook and lots of things in store for that to happen, to engage all of our co-implementers.
But I want to reaffirm.
Yes.
They're happy to see Joe. They really wanted to see the CEO.
Yeah.
So they really want to see you at least once a year.
Yeah.
Chair, I'm gonna strive for.
You can't talk from back there.
My goal in working with Rick is to have more frequent interaction with the city managers, mayors and others in addition to myself.
Thank you for making sure that's on the record.
Yes.
And have you had meetings so far?
The only one was the Washington County Leadership so far, we've got one planned tomorrow.
We have Beaverton tomorrow.
Yes.
I have met with Wallerton, Irwood, Hillsborough, Cornelius. Beaverton is tomorrow.
City staff or mayors?
City staff. City managers and whoever they bring, quite often it'll be an assistant city manager or their finance director, those staff.
I'm not, sorry, I'm not arguing at all, but rather we have to get clear. We can't just speak in terms of geographies, you have to be identifying. And part of the reason I ask is I'd like to hear at some point in time, the questions that you're being asked.
Oh, correct, yeah. Great, we'll definitely do that. Again, I have already talked about assigning some of my existing duties and leadership duties and that plan is in place. Staff are fully up to speed on what's happening, they know that we're looking to find efficiencies in the budget. And again, they, they're looking for the truth and, and very transparent communication. They said, just tell us what's really going on, we can handle it. I've heard that a lot in a lot of discussions and so that is going to be one thing that I'm working with Elizabeth to make sure they're getting timely communication that really answers their direct questions.
And in case you weren't in the room this morning, we want to be included on all employee emails. Yes, thank you, yes.
Hopefully you got the one then.
Yes, I did.
Yes. One of the, the upcoming meetings is an all leaders meeting on June 17th. And so we had an agenda that was kind of businesses.
That's that term of art, I recognize it, all leaders, from the food and beverage policy, I was like huh?
What is that, yeah. We, I've revamped the agenda, so we've got a large block for me to talk to staff, more important for me to listen to staff and, and the executive team as well. So it's really going to be a town hall forum, I've heard a lot of things, I already know most of the questions are a good number of them, so. But we are, we've sent an email out to, to make sure they provide questions, we'll take questions in advance and really open, open communications. Again, a key first step to rebuilding trust internally, hearing what's important to them, looking at this in some ways as an opportunity to make some changes. The concept of getting back to fundamentals is really appealing to a lot of people. So understanding how to get folks focused and, and use this as a, a chance to make some efficient changes and make sure everybody's really aligned and focused on how we're moving ahead.
Just, we have clarity on this, all leaders, is this like a group of 50-ish, 70-ish, 100, 150, what, like how big is this?
I think it's about 130.
How deep does it go? It's, it was explained to me before, but I couldn't pass the test today.
It includes all supervisors and managers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
130 of the 400, 450.
Yeah.
It's a good size.
It's a big group. Yeah, it's a big group.
One to four.
Yeah. And generally when I do these, and when I've done these in the past, the supervisors are encouraged to get questions from, you know, talk to your staff before, bring back the information after. And they're pretty good about, our, our folks are not afraid to speak up, which is good, so I anticipate a great meeting and a lot of good dialogue. We have an employee advisory council, I think that is a, a tool that we haven't fully leveraged. And now is a great opportunity to engage with them and I will engage with them directly to hear their thoughts and, and opportunities to move forward. Business Partners is another meeting that we do on a monthly basis, that's a smaller group of about 30 people, generally division managers and department directors. The most equally important, I would say, are small group meetings, I just show up, there was all the superintendents had a meeting on Monday. I told them I'm going to just pop in for the first, whatever time you need me for at the beginning of these meetings, to hear how things are going, to understand where I can help and generally get a, get a pulse on, it's mostly business related. We're not there just to hear how everyone is, you know, feeling, but it's part of that, just knowing that they're supported. So I think that's going to be a real benefit and they were super happy to have me at that meeting and that'll be the first in many meetings, the smaller groups across the district. Okay.
I'm struggling with the concept.
Yeah.
I don't want them to feel embarrassed anymore. And I don't know how we as a board ensure that they have confidence just like they had before. So that's an area where I would benefit from learning from your experiences in these different internal meetings.
Yeah.
How that plays out.
Yeah, well, I am happy to and will share all of the comments, questions and concerns that we gather through the town halls, so you get a sense of where, where staff are at. And in general, one of the biggest things I hear is the concern that people are going to lose sight of all the very good and positive work that is done, that unlike many places, our departments generally collaborate really well. We do not have a lot of that tension, say between operations and engineering. And so we don't want to lose some of that, I'll call it secret sauce that we have, and that is maybe one of the biggest concerns that they have is.
Like that that's at risk?
That's at risk, yeah, that's at risk. And by being engaged and the board has always been very engaged, I mean, I think that does a lot for them to feel that it's not at risk, honestly.
So I think I'll, I, I continue to feel confident with the path, the journey that we're all on under your leadership. And I look forward to learning more about that, the feedback and the sense of the employee group at our meeting July 18th.
Yeah.
One additional thing that I will add, you may not be surprised, I think staff is watching these work sessions and the board more than they have, at least in the recent past. And I think any opportunity for you to remind them from your perspective about the good work and the appreciation goes a long way. I know some of the comments from the B discussion in terms of the rate conversation was really well received by staff. I was approached by a number of folks and they said, it was really nice to hear the board talk about the good things that we're doing. So I want to make sure you hear that as well, because I've heard that.
Okay.
So this next slide is just to kind of ground us, look back, look forward. And certainly the Resolution Order 25-5 is, is not the be all end all, but it's a really important cornerstone of what we're doing when it comes to rebuilding trust with the public, with employees, ratepayers. So just, information is already here on this slide, but April 8th, the board passed the Resolution and Order. The first presentation by the CEO was on April 29th, we're here before you today on June 10th, and then we've already alluded to the follow-up on July 18th and you can see me diligently taking notes for other items to continue to add there. I want to now direct your attention to the Exhibit A. We went back and forth on how to present this information, we determined that it was easier in a table rather than trying to put it into PowerPoint form. What is in the table is organized thematically rather than in the exact form of the RNO for better readability.
As long as you assure me that everything that was in the RNO and more is in here, I'm good.
Okay, this is, this is the RNO and then we'll get into other actions.
Okay.
And we'll return back to the slide, so this is our little dalliance, yeah.
How about other commissioners, you?
Yep.
And you said it's organized thematically?
Thematically.
I didn't hear the word clearly, so.
Yeah, so we have financial accountability, travel, meals and refreshments, Clean Water Insurance Company, and then sort of a general catchall. And that's going to be our transition into our other actions and communication and engagement.
Great, take me through it.
Okay, if you take away nothing else, we have 14 separate actions, we are on track for timely completion of all items. I am very happy to report this to the board right now. Under fiscal accountability on page one, we are hiring an outside investigator to conduct a fiscal and performance review for travel and meals. Right now, where we are is the professional, professional services agreement with the scope of work is out for signature. And we have target dates listed for completion of that work in the table. Our finance department is in process on conducting a comprehensive review of the executive team's management expenses. We have the first two months that have been submitted to General Counsel and we will provide our first report to the board in July.
Oh, that's fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Got it.
And we are in process to train district employees on compliance with laws and district policies. And I have to give kudos to our legal and finance team, they are really pounding the pavement. 11 sessions have been held as of June 6th, over a third of all staff have been trained. So they are moving with purpose.
There was a training this morning, there'll be tomorrow.
Page two is travel. We are, we have evaluated the approval process for.
Nobody's travel gets approved if they haven't gotten the training yet, huh?
That's, we're working on it.
That's one way to motivate them. I don't know if, I can't remember if CWS has travel authorization, well, there you go.
Well, and actually if you refer to the, the last line on this travel page, right, General Counsel and Chief Compliance Officer reject non-compliant travel and training. And what you have listed there are some examples of travel reimbursement requests that were rejected, so things that we've seen in that sort of additional review. Going back up just to make sure we're being thorough, we have revised the district travel and training policy. And General Counsel, Chief Compliance Officer is reviewing our current policy and gathering data, right? How is it working, is it fitting our needs, are we, is it fully in compliance with what we have in the RNO? So that is in process.
Is that target date realistic given the stat, like the, I'm just questioning the timing given the status of certain employees.
We're working with all diligence to meet that timeline, that's the plan. We have some corrections that we're actually including within the most, the, the one we expect to complete at the end of this month. Now, will there be a delay, I don't anticipate it, but because of, you know, staff reviews, perhaps, but, but we're, we're intending to hit that target date.
The other thing that I would say is, these are CWS policies and so we can do a first review. And as we learn and identify additional issues, we can come back and make additional changes to those policies over time. But I appreciate the question. Moving to the next page, meals and refreshments, there are actually three items, we're missing one line there on this page. So the first one is General Counsel and Chief Compliance Officer will review the policy. Legal review is in process again, kind of similar to that travel piece, gathering data, getting sort of meaningful information about how it's actually operating. The next item, district will not reimburse local meal purchases by executive management team, absent, oh, yes.
Can we go back?
Please.
To that row?
Yeah.
Revices necessary to curtail executive management team meal expenditures. Interesting, is that wording right out of the RNO? Yes, it is, page two, number 20. Okay. Got it, okay, when in doubt, improve and go from there, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm caught up now.
No, all good. Yeah, some of this language was made a little bit more readable. Again, we're trying to make it easier for members of the public to understand what was actually in the Resolution and Order. But some stuff we had to hew pretty close to the actual, exact language in the RNO. So on that middle, the second item here around district will not reimburse local meal purchases by executive membership team. All members of the executive leadership team have returned their purchasing cards, so that is complete. And then the final item on this page, that the district will continue coding food expenditures into a single line item. This discussion came up during the budget process this year, it will be a way that we get better and better data and information to report on our actual expenditures and provide that clarity and transparency. On the fourth page, this is specific to Clean Water Services Captive Insurance Company. The quick board has adopted a policy that mimics our travel and training policy here at Clean Water Services. We are in process on an expedited domicile review that should be completed at the end of July and we have next steps listed under the summary of actions. And as part of that, we'll be setting up a, a meeting for our acting CEO and General Manager to discuss that, a draft review with you all. And then the final item on here is to obtain approval from the board before nominating representatives to Clean Water Insurance Company. There is a nuance under the summary of actions, under law, the CEO must be the representative of the sole member, but otherwise we will be working with the board to seek approval for future decisions.
Like.
Last but not least, directing the Chief Executive Officer slash General Manager to work with the board on a plan to restore trust. So that's what brings us here today. And we listed at a high level, obviously the work session, the captive insurance information session, the current work session that we're in now, launching an employee hotline, our July all-day work session and refining communication and engagement strategy. This was really a, a high-level synopsis and we're going to dive in in the slides.
I would, I would be more comfortable if under summary of actions, in the very first bullet, it said initial work session regarding plan to restore public trust. Because to me, it's, it's not a once and done.
Yeah.
And in hindsight, that was like, okay, yeah, that incorporates.
Yeah, that was like an addition question.
I believe I said, yeah, that was like what I've asked for, so, yeah.
I appreciate that Chair, I think that's a good reflection of this being an iterative process.
Yeah.
And I think you'll hear from our communications staff, right, we've really been in reactive mode and we are transitioning into proactive mode. And I hope you'll see that reflected as we move deeper into this.
I'm really looking forward to the further data that we as a board will have the opportunity to hear about on July 18th and really sit with it.
Yeah.
You know, with all the different ingredients that we've been talking about, so, yeah. But I'm, I'm wondering a little bit, and you may tell me to go back to, or point me back to the slides, sorry. Because we've talked about other things.
Yeah.
And things like, and some you've already acted on, the improved billing clarity and whatnot. So how do we tie things together? Because, you know, under, like under work session to rebuild trust, there are these different ingredients, or just put in the notes. See the slide set from over.
Uh huh. I would say see the, see the slide set for more.
Sorry, I, I felt like I just told you how to, you know, a specific way to do it, it's just the light bulb finally went off, that's, thank you.
Part of our job as communicators is to present information in a way that is accessible and understandable and is packaged in, in easily digestible ways, so this feedback is helpful.
Yeah.
And, and without further ado, I, I think I'm going to kick it over to our esteemed communications team of Joe and Karen.
Thank you Elizabeth. Just for introductions, I believe everyone knows Karen Baker, longtime employee of CWS. Karen is part of my portfolio, her team is Communications and Community Engagement Team. This is work they do on a day-to-day basis, I think it's elevated because of where we are. I'm going to hit on some of the, the higher level things that we have put into a three to six month plan, basically that we've outlined. Builds on the work that we were already doing and start from scratch, which is kind of elevating in terms of some of the things we're doing in light of the situation. You had mentioned one already, so we're trying to shift from reactive to be more proactive in terms of our communications and engagement. And I think that shift is happening for a variety of reasons, it's good. There are some key themes that we're trying to hit on, accountability, transparency and this back to basics focus for the district. Those are key themes and everything that we're putting together, are we hitting those? In terms of overall, we use a wider way of communication and engagement tools, there's a list up there, there's more than that, that's why the etcetera is. And when we say communication, it's not just external, we work also with our internal folks. There's a term that Karen always talks about, mixtural, because a lot of the communication that we put together can be utilized for both audiences, tweaked for both audiences. New word for me as a non-communications professional, so I'm learning. We feel it's very important to demonstrate action and to proactively communicate in a wide variety of ways. This again is back to that proactive rather than just reacting to whatever is out there in the media, for example. This next one I think is really important, we talk about this internally, we've had a strong base of trust. That's been hurt through the last few months, but it's still there. Yeah, it's still there, it's not like we're starting from scratch, not at ground zero. We would be incorrect to say that we are where we were prior to this, but we're, we're really building on that trust that we've built and that collaboration that we've built over the years. And that's important to acknowledge in terms of the work that we do.
Can I ask a question at this juncture?
Sure.
Karen, your home is your wheelhouse, not mine, though I have to communicate a lot, I get that to a lot of different audiences. Is there a better phrase, do you have a suggested phrase so that instead of saying things like throwing the baby out with the bathwater, I would benefit from some replacement phrases to use?
Oh, you're going to put me on the spot for that one.
You can think for a while.
You can say thank you and I'll send you an email.
Thank you and I would love to have those as well. I will get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a specific question. Underneath the third bullet, you've got examples, so bill inserts. Does everybody, do you all get?
I only get Beaverton one.
I don't get one and I, you know, it might, I think it would be a good.
Who gets CWS bill insert, just the unincorporated area folks?
Right, so we have water words and clean water words, which are utility bill inserts for the unincorporated. So it's those that receive direct services from Clean Water Services and then obviously.
I'd like to see those, so I, you know, I would like to just get an email.
But I know I get the, I get two different newsletters in CWS and I don't remember the title, there's the Joe Gahl one.
That's Community Connection.
Community Connections.
Which is once a month and the target audience is local elected officials and city managers and special district managers.
And then, well, yeah, I get the portal, but what's the other one?
Clean Water Connection.
That's the one.
Very similar names, and that's the general public one.
That's general public.
Yep.
And sometimes there's overlap in terms of.
I don't mind that at all, content.
Content.
And then I read pipeline, so.
Is there an opportunity to work with our partners to include the bill inserts into their process?
So we have the.
And they put their own bill insert right now, I, I know that because I get them from other jurisdictions, but.
They do, and one of the things that we ask and we have relationships with the communications folks like me at those organizations to put in stories. But once a year is when we have the opportunity to use that space to include our rate insert. So that's really only one time a year because they do have things that they have to send out every month. And those envelopes, for those that get printed are, get full, so we do that once per year, it's usually in May and June, it's happening right now. Monthly happens in May, May-June for the bi-monthly billing cycles or the every-two-month billing cycles, so that's our annual rate.
So that's our annual rate insert. We do have that opportunity. We don't have control other than once a year, and I mean, control, meaning the ability for our own insert to go into all the seven large cities.
However, as we talk with our cities, our large cities about billing and do we continue the way we've been doing it or doing it differently? Those kind of conversations and opportunities, how can we communicate more effectively, especially if we continue with joint billing? That's an area for improvement, I think, and discussion with our partners.
Well, the billings could, I mean, I'm Hillsborough, so it's a joint bill, but those could be redesigned, I believe, to emphasize what is the City of Hillsboroughs and what is Clean Water Services. Because on mine, you know, you see, it's a, there's one line that's a Hillsborough charge, one line that's Clean Water Services charge, then a total, and then there's like three different subtotals and all of that. You've got to really read it closely to understand this is Hillsborough and this is Clean Water Services.
Actually, it's not. If you look at the, it is bill explainer, they label it C W S, but it's not. It's C W S regional and city local. Even though they label it Hillsborough and Cornelius, I think the two of them, if I understood our billing.
I, I would encourage, if you have not had a chance, to look at the different bill samples to take a look and see if it helps or doesn't help you understand how our current billing operates with our customers. It's, it's very complex and complicated.
I thought it was.
And confusing. Well, but it had some explanation.
Once it's explained.
Once it's explained.
Yeah. And there are nine of them.
Nine.
Different variations.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I can see why Hillsborough gets criticized for increase. I mean, we heard it in the testimonies about C W S, and they were blaming C W S. But then they go back and they blame Hillsborough for C W S stuff, and so, yeah, I can understand that.
One of the things that, that we're doing currently, which we haven't had a chance to, to share with the board, is we've been doing these focus groups. Part of a planned work for Karen's team. And it's been very fascinating to hear from customers, just observations and a lot of confusion around billing. I don't know where my bill goes, what it goes to, what stays with the city, which versus what goes to C W S. I mean, it's been pretty fascinating, you said, to hear that.
And it's not been consistent from what we've heard in the past. So, I mean, many folks say they don't know what we do or who we are, but our surveys show that they feel we're doing a good job. But it would be nice to have more direct access to those customers. So that's where that utility billing relationship is very, very important, not only with utility billing staff, but communications folks, finance folks.
That's an odd message that they, what we do, but they, well, they, what they certainly know is that when they flush, something goes away. And they're happy about that.
But they, but on the contrast, they don't know anything about stormwater runoff.
No.
No.
It's all one deal, so, correct, yeah.
I mean, I've self-admitted that they, until I became an elected official, I didn't even know what a stormwater system was. Never thought about it, and I'm, I don't think I'm the average bear, so I think there are a lot of people in that.
You flush your toilet and you expect the rainwater to run down the drain. We're good.
So earlier, when you started, the first few bullets on this line, I was smiling because as you described it as a three-to-six-month plan, it's not just a three-to-six-month. But let me hear me out. You're, it's an operationalizing plan. No, it's your ops plan. It's not just a plan. No, this is what we are doing.
Correct. I think we're focused on the next three to six.
Like what you're going to do in the next three to six months. But to the, to the chair's point, you've got to be thinking about this as a forever.
It's your rolling ops plan.
Forever action.
Yeah, it's phenomenal.
And Karen reminds me quite often, this is not stuff that's new. We, we've been doing this for a while. It doesn't mean that we can't improve or do things differently, but this is not, we didn't just start doing this.
Talking about it more. Yep.
My last bullet before I pass it over to Karen for the next couple of slides is that consistency and clarity across C W S is really vital to build trust and credibility. And that, when I read that, I think more internally, you know, in terms of how we're communicating internally across the organization, because we've got some trust to, to rebuild within the, within the staff as well.
You've been doing it as of late, and you're going to continue to.
Correct.
And we're with you on that journey.
So one of the things that we talk about with that consistency and clarity with employees is that, that communicates, oh, it's communications written communications, and it's the face-to-face, so it's both of those. And it's very important to do with employees because they are ambassadors. And those employees that actually connect face-to-face with the community, that consistency and clarity is even more vital. Utility billing staff, as I mentioned, our field operations staff, our community engagement staff, which is a lot of my team. That consistency and clarity is also very, very important with those who speak and work on behalf of Clean Water Services. Those are those city partners and staff. Those are nonprofits with whom we leverage a lot of our work with and contractors and vendors. All of them are part of our reputation and our brand, so having that consistency and clarity as legs. So some of the key actions that we've completed, we've spoken about some of them. We have a regular publication of the pipeline, which is our employee newsletter. Community Connection, which is Joe's newsletter. Clean Water Connection, which is the general public newsletter, and then utility billing inserts. We, we talked about the CEO meetings with C W S staff and city managers and those enhanced connections that Rick is proposing as an employee are very important, having more of that connection and more connection to all of you. We've hosted the captive insurance information session. And then we posted and promoted key updates to the website, which many of you know about. Our website is our key cornerstone communication stool. And we have the transparency pages, what we call F A Qs, and our, our commitment is clear pages. Sample bill explainers, so that page is up and running. Chair, we made those changes to Cornelius and Hillsborough's bills, so I'd like you to take a look at them when you have a chance. It's our rates and billing page. And then public meetings, we made those a little bit more clear and accessible on the website as well. Small little tidbit, we follow as part of our metrics, like I said, communications as a science. So we do have the data on website traffic that's happened since January. We looked at January through March, and we have our top five pages. We looked at then March or end of March through last week, and those top five pages stayed the same. So our homepage, pay your bill, careers, design and construction standards, and leadership. In order, if that hits. So it's very interesting, and that's how we follow and we adapt our communications plan. Responded to public records requests, released requested records from C W S. And then we responded to and reported constituent inquiries, so.
And you have built, you've earned my confidence very quickly. It's only been a small number of weeks, and I'm really happy.
That's fantastic, and huge thanks to being a Riddator on Karen's team. He's been invaluable in helping to respond in a timely fashion.
Yep.
Definitely a team effort. You see the end result from Elizabeth, but a lot of the work gets done by Karen's team.
Yep. Thank you.
So understanding sentiment and measuring effectiveness. I've spoken about this to the budget committee is that, you know, we have stakeholder requirements and understanding that are at the core of C W S's leadership system. So being first, you know, seeking first to understand before being understood is vitally important. We do that across the organization with employee Gallup survey with employees. We just mentioned the rate payer focus groups that we're doing and the customer awareness and satisfaction survey that we'll bring to you in the fall. Rick, the acting CEO, GM, our reach to the city partners. And then again, his outreach to employee and small groups. And then continued tracking of constituent inquiries. So it's connecting the dots, and I mentioned this also at the budget committee meeting. Connecting the dots between all of the listening systems across C W S. So we have a shared understanding of what everyone is hearing, and they're all singing from the same song sheet. We take all this data, and we always say, everyone is not an audience. It's customized and accessible messages that are delivered using the right tool at the right time to have impact. And one of the things that we talk about is that, you know, communications and engagement, you know, it's an art and a science. It's based on strategy, based on data, and we need to regularly check in with folks, see how we're doing so we can adapt. And that, you know, doesn't happen in a vacuum. That happens across the organization, so.
So I have a question. Because to me, it's part of communications and engagement. We've talked about having a C, another C W S essentials for, because we have a large population of city councilors and special district managers who, not just managers, the directors, who haven't had the opportunity to take C W S essentials. Do you have a date yet?
So we're planning two different events, both in September is the target.
September, great.
One will be for elected officials like we normally do. One of the questions I actually want to tee up.
Oh, did I? Oh. Didn't mean to read ahead.
No, no. I hope to ask a question just because it's in my mind and planning that. Historically, we've done two sessions to provide flexibility.
Yeah, an evening, one.
Thursday and a Saturday.
Yeah.
Is that the expectation, or do you, should we continue with that?
What do you need to do for the target audience? Sorry, I don't like asking a question with a question, but I'm left with, yeah.
For me, that flexibility is really important. Elected officials are very busy.
Yeah, do a do.
So if we do just a Saturday, then somebody's like, I'm not spending a Saturday. If you did a Thursday night.
Only if you can guarantee rain.
Yeah.
Or how about this?
I think it's a good strategy to allow those options.
Okay, that, that's good to hear. And then.
And if you haven't been to a C W S essentials since 2023, go to one. And you can do the welcome.
I have a question. How does C W S fit in to communications?
So hold on, I want to answer the second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, we only got the first one.
So the, the other one that I think is critical to do, and it's easier because it's during the work week. I want to offer one for, there's a new city manager in Tigard, for example, who's from Arizona and has no idea who C W S is. There are new assistant city managers in Beaverton, so I want to offer one for staff to come and participate. We'll probably just do one at Durham to include a plant tour, but I, I want to hit that audience as well.
What about, what about employees of T V W D?
We can include them. That's easy.
Just wondering what the cross-training might benefit, might or might not.
Well, they're no different than all the public works folks at different cities who do the drinking water side. So, yeah, I don't think you need our permission.
No, I just wanted you to know that we're, we're planning that as well.
I'm more interested in wondering about, maybe in future years, we think about a Clean Water Academy.
That's my dream, sorry.
Folks, folks who aren't yet applying to C W S. And we've, we invested in, with a grant from Metro in having the solid waste and recycling program as done with Central Cultural back in 2019. So. Their ideas you could operationalize in future years.
Piggybacks on my Sherwood days, we had what was called Sherwood Citizens University. We may not have called it that now, but the reality is most of my counselors went through that.
Yeah.
And a lot of board and commission folks went through that. And they got the bug. They, they went and they learned a little bit more how their city's operating. And they're like, this is really cool. How do I get involved? Get on a board or commission? I see Forest Grove is starting their first one as well, so I'm a big proponent of those. So Director Tracy, you asked a question that I cut you off.
No, you didn't cut me off. You, you weren't finished, so I apologize. I was just asking how C W S fits in here because I didn't see them particularly mentioned.
Let me take that?
Yes.
Okay. It's a great question. We don't necessarily think of C W S as part of our communications plan as an advisory commission to us, but they are such a fantastic snapshot of the community because of how the commission is structured. And so I've been trying to build in some space. We both have time before the meeting begins and during announcements to hear questions and get a good sense of sentiment from our commission members. But we, and I circulated a survey on sort of satisfaction engagement. It was before all of the sort of media attention occurred, but trying to also just gauge, do they feel it's worth their time? What kind of input do they want to see? So we factor in feedback that way, but it's, it's not really part of our, I would say, communication strategy. We could say it's part of our engagement strategy, though, because they're really such great leaders in their, of their specific respective domains. Thank you.
Do they ever come and talk at, at, at the essentials training?
Some of them have participated in C W S essentials, depending on the timing of their experience on C W S. We have new.
Two rounds of C W S, two, 2023 and 2025. It's not an annual thing. And an every other year thing.
We have positions that are going to be opening up soon, or they're open up now. So we're going to have potentially new C W S members that we would like to have go through that, so.
So another thing that would be helpful to the board is put us all back on the C W S interested parties list. So that we once again get the notice of packet availability. Because over prior years, I learned a lot from the slide decks. I just read them.
Back to Rick, or you?
Big thanks to him. No, I, I was just going to say that, just acknowledging what you've already said, actually, you did to Director Snyder, that this is not, I mean, communications and engagement's a 24/7 job, and because we're dealing with people and engaging with people, things change and we need to be responded. So the longer-term plan, we're updating the strategic communications plan, so that's the longer-term plan. And there's also an employee engagement plan. So this is a snapshot. It's just the start to moving from reactive to proactive. So those all need to work together, especially as we're working in a severely fragmented communications framework nowadays.
Can I make one other comment here? That this is, I don't know if you'll view this as somewhat wacky, but I think it, I think it belongs here, given my actual practical experience, and I know there is, in, in more of my city, passity role. There is a, and you all are working, I think, more aggressively as an organization on emergency preparedness, emergency response, et cetera. Another place that I saw a lot of engagement in community in general is in really having a community emergency response team. And I know that's mostly driven city-wise, and that's why I'm, you know, I'm not sure if this comment really belongs here. But I think it might make sense, particularly in preparing for disasters, if Clean Water Services considered that. And I bring it up under engagement because that was one of the most real ways that I saw real engagement with what I would consider somewhat less involved community members throughout the county. And when I, you know, you go to a, a fair in any city in the area, usually the cert team from whatever city or area it is, is engaged in that. And I mean, I, you know, there, there will be an incident someday when Clean Water Services needs that type of engagement, even if it's to just clear stu-, you know, clear debris out of storm drains and massive incident, whatever. I, I think it's an engagement strategy you all should consider in the long term.
Have you talked to Beth at all?
So we have a, a Ledling Emergency Management Program, about six months old.
Yeah.
We have our first emergency manager, looking forward to reporting to the board, probably doing something with the county. And, you know, our, our lane gets pretty specific to the lifeline around wastewater. But we are part of, it's a team sport, and I think folks are going to be worried about sanitation when the big one hits.
So I just think it's, I, I would, I would suggest you all think of it as an engagement strategy, too.
Correct.
And I would like to, once again, thank.
And I would like to, once again, thank you, Elizabeth, for spearheading this topic of emergency management and for engaging with Washington County for the employee forum that we've had the last couple of years and building off of that. You know, it's pretty cool. I have my poo and pee stickers now as a result from my bucket system.
Got those too.
So, you know, every little bit helps.
The three P's.
The two buckets.
Yeah. Pool noodles and some buckets is what you need, Jerry.
I don't know what you mean by.
Three P's, pee, poop and paper.
Oh, okay.
I was having a little trouble with that.
Forget to have the paper.
Yeah.
Kind of important.
What a good segue.
Back to you, Rick.
Anything.
Keep going.
Kick it over to the big bucks.
Yeah.
So what we aren't yet asking you to do is put together a community program and fund it through the budget for such an engagement. Though I think there's probably some ideas.
Okay, so other key items, this is kind of a summary slide of things that we've talked about as well as some new concepts. The launching of the employee hotline is an example of one that's happening, I think, next week, so we got, we got that one up and coming. The next one, we're very excited to get going on, the evaluation of the low income assistance program. So what, what I don't have ready today is when, how, you know, we haven't kind of got that plan in place, but that's the challenge to our team is to develop a schedule and an approach and present that to you, so we're all on the same page with respect to when, not do we just want to do the evaluations, but I like having the word recommendations up here on some of these, that's where we need to get to. Is, is making some, some key decisions on a lot of these points. We just talked about planning CWS Essentials and having a couple of meetings in the fall. It's kind of nice that we just did one. I know we had some ideas about how we might do it a little differently next time, and I believe the chair had some thoughts on that too. So it'll be an opportunity to maybe revisit the, the approach. It was a great meeting, but there's some opportunities, I think, to make it a little bit more interactive and efficient, so we'll look forward to doing that. Demonstrate efficiency through robust budget process and the cost of services study, so we are, we are challenged and up for the challenge to look at ways to really show the value that we're providing to the board as well as all of our rate payers. And making sure that we are being as efficient as possible. This is an opportunity for us to go back and look at some status quo items and find some efficiencies and other ways of doing business. We talked a lot about the shared billing process, and again, we want to get to the recommendation point, provide you a schedule of how we're going to get to that, some of the challenges and opportunities of making that happen. Implementing the recommendations, I think that will be completed in the fall, so the study will be done. What are we going to do with it? And ongoing development of a centralized records management system. So as part of our overall records structure, we'd like to make it more efficient and more robust, so that when we do get public records requests, we're able to respond, you know, more quickly. And we have lots of things that we've talked about with respect to our digital infrastructure and the needs to advance some of those systems. This is front on the list, so that we're able to respond quickly. And then, again, it's kind of a continuation, but we're going to forever be revisiting and adapting potentially our communications and engagement plan. We, we have this one issue, but we never want to lose sight of the importance of good communication, good engagement and, and speaking to the audience. There's always opportunities to do better. We're going to right the ship, but then we'll continue to, to make improvements.
You know, one thing that I haven't looked at, seeing the website and the, the banner and knowing the pages that I frequently go to. Do you have all the safe harbor languages accommodated?
No.
No. Okay, great. Learning opportunity.
Yeah.
Aaron's been working on this.
Yes, we have been, it's right, especially with the ADA Title II requirements coming down the pike that we need to accommodate in 2027, so we need to update our accessibility for sure.
Have you, Brad, have, and the other members of the legal team had the opportunity to meet Alex Barnett yet?
No.
We should try and correct that.
Sure, I was.
Heard it yesterday.
Yeah.
Uh, he's our new county council, and we already had two executive sessions with him today on day two.
Burning the fire, eh?
And his experience with the, as a member of the US Army JAG team, working in the administration these last few months, already been helping us.
On the low income assistance program, can I just ask about this? Or maybe just put this in your head to think about as a team? Is, I would expect that program to be available to all Clean Water Services customers, which means entities that are billing on behalf of Clean Water Services, I just want to make sure whatever you bring back contemplates that?
Okay. Yeah.
Can you remind me when, what timeframe you're targeting to bring something to the board?
On that, on that?
Yeah. He said he wasn't that. I didn't write it down.
I would like to present some timelines, and I think July would be a good opportunity for us to.
I'm putting down second half of 2020.
Yeah, not, not to be done with it, but to present the plan and a schedule, so.
So I, for the board's sake, I have, or information, I mean. I have pulled in the vice chair, so whoever's vice chair next year on the rotation. You'll have one more occasional meeting to do the planning for the board for CWS. So for example, Commissioner Tries and I will be meeting with Rick and Elizabeth tomorrow and talking more about the agenda for July 18th and future.
Yeah, and I think a lot of these will be good check-ins or quarterly meetings.
Yep.
Good to have dates with deadlines.
Yep.
I think the last slide was, you've already given us a lot of good action and ideas, but just are there any other additional actions that we don't have outlined today that you?
Yeah, and if I could put it a little differently, are there things that have been on your brain over these last few months that you don't see yet? Afternoon's always a little hard for us, we shake out the cobwebs.
I would like to see our ability to respond to public information requests in a more timely and thorough manner and confidently. And I, I think that's a, I put that on this plan more generally because I think it's part of being a public entity in Oregon and just being able to fulfill those accurately, timely, and as cost effectively as possible. And I know that was, I think, well, anyway, I, I think it should be part of the broader plan that the organization is moving towards, and I'm sure the records management system is part of that, but I don't know that that gets at it totally.
Well, and to build on that, and maybe this is, I'm pinpointing what you're talking about, it's like the, are so hard to build what the history has been on our travel because of the, the records management, and I assume, Jason, I wasn't sure if that.
Things like that.
That was, might have been an example, but my confidence is not very high around, around that type of piece. So I'd like to see more of what's happening in records management as well. So.
I will also share, in case I haven't already, and I might have previously. I had connected our general counsel, since public records fulfillment falls under our general counsel. I had connected Philip Brandsford and Caroline up because, as a shared board, we are familiar with the method of Washington County delivering public records. And I feel like we're having a different experience as the board for Clean Water Services, and I noticed the difference. And so I'm not, but I don't know enough to be able to say, well, here's how it works at Washington County. I can only tell you what I experienced from Washington County. So that's why I wanted to have them hook up to compare processes. And there's been so much going on that I don't know that they've had the time yet, because I know Philip's been quite busy as well with, with budgets and, and other public records requests simply from articles that we've seen. So I think there's an opportunity there.
So I'm glad that you raised that because this has been a task that we've been considering in legal. Obviously, events have conspired against us in this right now, but we've been talking about, should we look at a system that makes it a much more manageable process? An important piece of, though, is a records management system, which CWS does not have. And so that is a piece that we need to build in as well.
I don't know that we do here at Washington County either.
I would agree with you. Your sections, but the records management is a little more challenging from my limited experience at Clean Water Services than it is at the county.
So I hear that. I have no problem in hearing that whatsoever, but there isn't anything beyond that for me to operationalize. I don't know if that means money investment in a tool, development of new policies and whatnot. So I'm not asking you to articulate it now, but please let us know.
Yeah, the, a, a preview is, we've been thinking about it already, and it will include policies as well as a record, a, a system in place for records management. I know it's already in the budget, Digital Solutions is, is exploring that, so that piece is already in the works. We.
So in the next step, when you go over that arena with us, I want the answer to be, have you looked at the Washington County system and how do they compare? Which is what's theirs? And the answer to be yes.
Yeah, this is what we can learn.
And Chair, I will jump in from a communication side. Sat down with Philip Brandsford and Mary Hartshorn, who are both very generous with their time and feedback, and we talked about an array of things, including constituent processes, but also we touched on public records requests, so we've gotten a little bit into the CWS. Washington County, I melded on that, but I think it, it would behoove the legal team to also, I will share that information that's just happened yesterday.
And also, County, County, CWS Council needs to make sure you're in the know on latest OGEC rulings as well. As we've been experiencing them on the county side.
We are familiar with them and actually some of the pieces that are going to be in the updated food and travel policies directly address that.
Excellent.
The other action that I think we should probably consider, and this is probably something that's both the board, jointly the board and staff is around long-term governance and whether the board structure should remain as is. And the reason I bring that up as a sort of public trust discussion is really around whether or not there is the right level of involvement from partners, et cetera, in the broader scheme of govern, governance here. I don't know whether a, you know, moving towards a model that looks like the way the Washington County Housing Authority is set up might be a consideration where it is the whole.
So first I would ask that you go over the two different learning days that we had very consciously before Roy Rogers ended his term on CWS before asking us to take it up another time.
So I am aware of that conversation happening in, I believe in late 2022 into 2023 or.
And '24.
I, well.
I don't want us to.
I'm happy, I'm happy to take that offline, but I, it, I don't know that the result is where, ended up where it needed to.
Well, then that's for the board to decide if it wants to take up that whole effort again before staff puts any more time into it.
Fair, fair enough comment.
Yep.
Good with that.
Great.
You did a great job, Rick.
Day two.
And you and Alex.
Yes.
Nor she. Comment on that picture of me with my long hair.
I was.
On the leadership side. If I need to grow my long hair back, I can do that.
No, we're not allowed to comment on how people look.
Oh, okay.
We can.
Come out of your mind.
Yeah.
I would, I would ask all of us to be thinking as we go through this. We, we're going to be going, setting up a executive search. We've got a lot of different pieces that are going to be on our plate. The other, the other piece I'd like to hear from you and from staff as we move forward is the organizational structure. And what, what your thoughts are there, what, and I, I'm really hesitant to say that we need to change it. That's not the point that I'm trying to bring forward. It's more, where is, where is the comfort level? And are, you mentioned you moved one department over to Joe's natural systems, I think it was. Chairs on the deck have moved again. Yeah. And, but I think I'm informed. Yes, so.
You want to be confident that that's been done thoughtfully and that we're hearing the results of it?
Yes, but I also want to consider, as you move through this, that we're having discussions around effective organization.
Yeah. So allow me to make sure, there's two parts to effective organization. There's things that we can do within the structure we have today, in the leadership structure. And some of that, I think, is going to need to be looked at as part of the efficiencies for the budget of next year. And I know you're all tired a little bit of us moving pieces around, but I'm going to ask for us to, at least to be able to present some options with respect to efficiencies that might make some sense. We've had some of those.
I think if we could have that conversation preliminarily.
Yes.
So we don't see it in the budget document?
As a first.
As the first time, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. And then there's the bigger picture. Are we going to stick, are we going with the GM different? Are you referring to?
Are we going with the GM model or?
Yeah.
Yeah. And chiefs and.
And chiefs, yes.
And that's, that's nomenclature to a large degree, but I, but it's, but it also speaks to what the design of the organization is, and I think that the, I think we've all demonstrated here as board members that we have a high interest in, in making sure that as we move forward and utilize this opportunity to, to be aware of where our strengths, weaknesses are across the board. So and I really appreciate the openness that I felt from staff, and I think it's great. I'm comfortable with and open to having some shifts for the short term. But one of the things that CWS has done well is it has had lead time on retirements. And so I don't support having natural, specifically, I don't support having natural systems move over. And so I don't support having natural, specifically, I don't support having natural systems move over to Joe Gull's portfolio on a, on a permanent basis.
Yeah, yeah.
So there needs to be some more proactive organizational management than what I think we've experienced over the last year.
Yeah. Agreed. Understood.
And I think just like on the county side, we may have to make some changes so that board endorses or the high level organizational setup.
And I asked, I know we moved off the topic, but are there other board members that are willing to revisit the governance topic as I proposed it?
I think what, I think first of all, Jason, I'd like to sit in with you on a review of what we've done previously.
Fair enough. Yeah, I think I need to catch up to there.
I'm fatigued by.
We've, we've got.
That's fine. So. My bigger picture concept around that is just that I think our partners may need to have more engagement overall, and that's one way to do it. That's not the only way.
I think our partners already struggle with their own model with J W C. We're not, by asking some of them to do more is not going to make more time for them.
All right. I got my answer. Not what I hoped for, but we'll put it on the party. Well, I do, I think we all need to keep an eye on, on it, a bigger picture.
But again, I think it will be good for you to bring in the same information I asked for. Who participated in the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five C W S Essentials Program? And how does that compare to the current roster across all the differences? Yep. Speaks volumes. Sometimes you just don't know what you just know.
Sometimes ignorance is bliss.
Okay. So I think that's it for today. Great. And without any further ado, we don't have any other topics for today. So that's it for Tuesday, June tenth. We're adjourned. Thank you.